There it goes. All right, the bottom of the hour, it's 5:30. Good evening, everyone. It's is 5:30 on behalf of Morehead City Council. Welcome. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And it's a good evening, which I always say in Morehead City, every day is a good day, just some day better than others. And tonight, we're going to recognize one of our own this evening. So it's one of those better than other evenings. But thank you for being here and enjoy the cooler weather. I'm sure Indian Summer will be back soon, but right now it feels pretty good. Councilmember George Blue, would you give us the invocation, please?
I will. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we love you and thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you provide for us each and every day. Heavenly Father, help us to be mindful that each and every blessing we receive come from you and because you love us. We thank you for all the many people in our community who work together, given of their time, to make Morehead City the greatest place on earth to live, work, and raise our families. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you've given our mayor, city council, and our staff to serve the people of Morehead City. Help us to be mindful that each one of us are in these positions to serve, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we lead and make decisions for our city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Ask you now if we would all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seen it? The next item on the agenda. The council always takes pride in recognizing all the talents and the gifts and just the giving of our employees of their service to our community. And tonight, we're going to recognize Scott Camden upon his retirement from the Morehead City Fire Department. So Scott, if you would come forward, please. And bring anybody that you would like to come up with you.
We're all getting to the modern world. And so I'm going to be holding a mic tonight and not flailing my arms around. And we are told we need to stand right here. I tell them it's like will of fortune. You ever notice the Ryan Seacrest now always says, "Stand right here." But we're here tonight to recognize Scott in his many years of public service. Scott has a story. We all have stories, but Scott has a story. And Scott's story began for public service in 2001. In Fairview there in western North Carolina. And his best friend was a volunteer fireman at the time, but you joined him at the volunteer fire department. And after that night, he was hooked. That's the night that he got called for public service. You've heard me say many times that you don't choose public service. Public service chooses you. And he got chosen that night. But he joined the fire department the next day. And in Fairview, he volunteered there until about the year 2005. Then he moved to Midstate, Garner. And he served there with Garner as a firefighter there until, on the grace of God, he moved to God's country here in coastal North Carolina. In eastern North Carolina, he became here in Morehead City in 2017. And so we've been blessed with Scott for seventeen, how many years is it? Eight years here in Morehead City. But he's been in the fire service. He's been in the public service for twenty-four years. That speaks by him. That's a lifetime. And the people that give themselves to public service, they understand that. Well, Scott, just about a year or so ago, Scott was diagnosed with, I can say it, multiple myeloma. And he's been going through stem cell transplants for the past year. Just a picture of strength standing up here next to him. And I've never seen him falter. He's still, his passion is still within the fire service, within public service. But there comes a time that we all have to step back and let somebody take our place. And Scott is recognizing that. And he's gone through his treatment. So he needs to back off a little bit and focus on himself now. And he'd been focusing on others for twenty-four plus years, but now it's time to focus on himself. So Scott's going to be retiring from the Morehead City Fire Department this evening. And it gives me great pleasure on behalf of just a grateful community of Morehead City and throughout the state. Because I know he's got friends in Garner and friends back in Fairview also. And we in Morehead City, we're going to present him this resolution upon his retirement, Resolution 2025-R-44, and just recognizing all the contributions that he has given to others, just given to himself, others before self. And whereas Morehead City desires to recognize and honor employees of the Morehead City for dedicated and distinguished contributions to the community. And whereas Scott Camden began his career with the Morehead City Fire EMS Department as a firefighter paramedic on March the 30th, 2017, and retired on September the 1st, 2025, with more than eight years of faithful service to the city and more than twenty years of service in the North Carolina retirement system, having previously worked for the Garner Fire Department and as a lieutenant. And whereas during his tenure with the Morehead City Fire EMS Department, Scott Camden served countless calls for service, handled the aftermath of Hurricane Florence in September 2018 and the COVID pandemic in 2020. And whereas Scott Camden was instrumental in the installation and implication of amateur radio, also known as the ham radio, in the fire station as a backup communication system. And whereas Scott Camden was instrumental in the implication of the Morehead City Fire and EMS Accountability System, known as Passport System. And whereas Scott Camden's selfless dedication to his profession made Morehead City a safer place to work, live, and play. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of Morehead City that appreciation be shown to Scott Camden in honor of his loyal service and dedication to the citizens of Morehead City. And we urge all to extend congratulations to him upon his retirement, adopted this ninth day of September, 2025. And Scott, you'll never know just how much we really appreciate you. Be glad when we get a clip on Mike.
So Scott, just to echo what the mayor said, and he said it well. We want to, you know, on behalf of the fire department, thank you for your service, not only to the department, but to the community and the county and the state. So as a small token of our appreciation, I want to, and as tradition has it, I want to present to you your fire helmet and your badge.
Scott, before we call all your buddies up here, the fire department with our group with you, do you have anything to say?
He's been saying it for 21 years. He's said it all.
All right. CFD.
Now they can't see you.
Cause you put all the way around to the other side.
Where's this cancer? Where is this cancer?
Where?
Where?
I don't know.
Where is this cancer?
Yeah, why were you hiding? You should have been up front.
Oh, that's agenda, in case anybody is. All right, thank you, everybody, for being here. As we recognize Scott and his community service for many, many years. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. These are all items that have been through the committee. There are a lot of them like housekeeping items, resolutions. And the committee has recommended that they be put forth to the full board for their authorization, for their vote. And so therefore, but they also have the option to pull in any item off for individual consideration if they like. I ask now if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Harvey, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Motion carries. New business. This is to consider the approval of the release of closed session minutes or portions thereof as recommended by the city attorney and the city manager. These minutes have been on the city clerk's desk this week. And all council members have had the opportunity to go by and review them before tonight's meeting. So we don't have to do that this evening. So I would just ask if there is a motion to release the closed session minutes.
Mayor Jones, I move to approve of the release of closed session minutes or portions thereof as recommended by the city attorney and city manager.
Okay. A motion by Lee, is there a second? Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Okay, city managers report.
Continuing with the good news that we just received today. So city manager's report, I've got several items, so bear with me kindly. One, I'm going to read verbatim because it makes me very proud as a humble servant to you and this city. What am I talking about? GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Found out today. I'll read from Jewel Laster's email. Morehead City has been honored with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 2025-2026 budget. This recognition reflects Morehead City Council's commitment and support of transparency and financial stewardship. From the hand and word of Jewel Laster, at which I concur completely. Additionally, the award reflects the hard work and dedication of everyone who participated in the budget process. A little bit of pause for me. I could not be more proud of our entire finance staff and all the hard work they did. I'll continue on. Ms. Laster would also like to share the highlight LeAnn Vincent's efforts in this process for her outstanding dedication and effort in preparing this document. Her invaluable contributions and her ability to bring together all the required components in such an impressive presentation were essential to earning this award. An additional speaker's note from me. The volume of work to be able to get this and have that presentation. I don't want to jinx us in saying it's one of the three that we're going to vault to, but it is the start of that again this year. And I could not be more proud of your entire team. So GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, found that out today. Congratulations, finance staff. Moving on. As reference to all of the updates I provide to you, the strategic plan, the 25, 28 strategic plan, I'll reference those categories as I bring these next four or five items. Strategic Plan Item or Category 25 S3, City Staff Service Awards to be honored in November. As a kind reminder to you, your city staff service awards will be honored during your November council meeting. This change allows family members to be present, to champion and receive that honor along with their staff member who works with you and for you. City council staff users of service will recognize those. I think I looked this past week. You'll have a 25, several twenties, some fifteens on forward. So it goes every five years, and we will recognize those in November. A kind reminder again to you, that date is Wednesday. So your November meeting is Wednesday. Nodding to the clerk to make sure I'm not incorrect because the prior Tuesday is Veterans Day. So you'll have your November meeting and we'll champion those city staff for those service awards during that day. As a result, there will not be a Christmas luncheon during the work week due to our size, our shift availability, and service requirements. So you've heard me and our subcommittee say that department heads have signaled to you and to me that they're celebrating their staff and would like to champion to do so. As this city grows, it gets unfortunately more difficult for all of us to gather in that manner. So just know that we want to champion them in front of you and want you to have the opportunity to applaud the longstanding service of several of your city staff. Okay? 25 S3, the next one. City auditors are on site through December. City audit work continues starting in July through December. Reason why I'm highlighting this is because this process is critical, it's time sensitive, and it's labor intensive for us as staff. This is our annual check on us and for you to assure you and the public that our work is both complete and healthy in every way. I share this because this is post-implementation of your city budget falls just after that. So the alignment of both audit work and budget implementation is a tasking and time-consuming thing for staff. I know that Jewel Laster has also championed that effort. So when you see extra faces and places and what they are doing, it's more than just budget implementation. We're working through city auditors, which is a regular and recurring thing. Moving on. 25 S4, Objective 24 and 25 S3 in your strategic plan. City fiber connectivity and upgrades. City buildings and facilities are receiving fiber network connections this week through year end. City IT is working with departments to ensure daily work connectivity and secure fiber connections is completed in a timely fashion without any hiccup. So just letting you know that when you see folks walking around doing extra things with yellow vests is because we're improving our fiber connections to almost all of our city facilities. 25 S4, two more. 25 S4, Objective 23, an update on our Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'll signal to Sandy to throw a piece of paper if I miss this. As required, our current draft is now with the city staff for review for your ADA Disability Act compliance. And we'll follow through your subcommittees, your subcommittees thereafter, admin, finance, public services, parks, rec, et cetera. Staff is tentatively projecting delivery on January 7th, then to planning committee in September and full council in October-ish. Everybody hear that? Okay, ADA draft on the website. So I just want to give you an update that we're moving through that process. Last one, actually last two. 25 S2, Objective 12, planning update on the towns at Spooners Creek. Why am I bringing this forward? Because everybody's seeing land clearing behind Walmart and wants to know what in the world? And why has it taken so long? Just as a general update, towns at Spooners Creek, 118 multifamily units receive preliminary plat approval. Infrastructure is now under construction, general infrastructure. We are awaiting receipt of a revised lighting plan and providing this update, given the number of inquiries as I referenced before, because citizens are asking us what's going on with site work. So as that moves forward, you'll see additional progress. Right now, groundwork, site work, lighting plan coming forward. 118 towns at Spooners Creek. Lastly, I'm seeking your input as we city staff are at an impasse with the license agreement process. A list of the contested items I've placed at the dais with you. I'm seeking your direction with the current license for the Marlins so that I can achieve your directive to me and to city staff to open our public baseball stadium for all interested organizations. We have achieved that proudly with great success to include Carrick Community College Men's Baseball, our area high school games, other junior college tournaments, as well as interested summer wood bat leagues. I need your dialogue, input, and direction on how to move forward. And again, I've placed before you those contested items should you wish to ask me or staff questions. Mayor.
Thank you, manager. At everybody's place, there is a. At everybody's place, there is a list of items that the city manager, I, and Mr. Bengal have been working on for the past few weeks. And the purpose of this is, although the council, we gave the staff direction about three or four leases ago, we just could not come to that concise agreement with the Marlin organization that everybody was agreement to. And then talking individually among the council and the committees, we still couldn't get a consensus of really what direction the staff needed to go. So we decided that, I decided that the best thing to do is just get us together as a group. And let's individually, we'll go through this list. And we'll just indicate to the staff what our wishes are. And they will take that direction and go ahead and prepare the lease for Mr. Bengal. The first, and the first item is, Mr., it was a longer-term lease, license greater than five years. And Mr. Bengal stated that he was more concerned about the term, but more than the terminology. But at least a five-year term, which has been done. It's a five-year lease now. And so the question would be to the council, does everybody agree on that?
Yeah.
I'd like to interject something, may everyone guess. The bottom line that I'm seeing is that we need to be able to provide baseball. That's what this is all about. Being able to make sure that we provide baseball for the citizens. So to me, that's my primary focus, is that we provide them the entertainment that they've had to pass. But the key to me is baseball. So I'd like to pursue that to make sure that we keep baseball in Morehead.
Yeah, more than one team.
Baseball.
Oh, yeah, definitely, more than one team. And I'd like to also, it's baseball, but the purpose of this lease is, in my opinion, more than baseball. This is about a relationship that we've had with the Marlin organization for 15 years. This is about a community that has embraced that. We want to continue that if we can. We can come to a mutual agreement with everything because if we just bring another team in, the community's going to be starting from ground zero to build that community relation back up, that spirit that you see, the camaraderie and the, this is the team spirit when they go out there to support their ball team.
But let me say this, Jerry. I don't want you to miss, cause you should something. I would hope that the Marlins can play ball here. I mean, that's been, that's been what we've done. So I want everybody to know, I hope that they can. You know, so.
There we go. And the staff, they were at an impasse because they really, without the council, they were getting some mixed signals. But we needed to come together to let them know what we felt like and which direction to go. But the five years has been agreed upon.
Mayor, just so that I can keep score to the best of possibility. Since we're talking about baseball, score is appropriate. I saw three here. I didn't see down there, but I've got the three. Does anybody else want to be in this five-year term? It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Harvey, I know you wanted to have baseball, but you didn't say anything about the term. That's what we're dealing with right now.
Term is fine.
Okay.
What is it currently?
I think the last one was like three years. But this will be extended to five.
Okay.
He had had, in some conversations we've had, wanted to go up beyond five. But what we're saying here is, do you want five? You want more? I'm hearing five is acceptable unless you tell me otherwise. And this isn't really a voting process. I'm just letting you know, as we have discussed many times before, three of you get to make this determination. If I don't get three people to say yes, then it's a no. And that's kind of what we're trying to do is to count heads without a vote. The consensus of council and how you want to proceed.
So Mr. Mayor, can I ask the manager a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. City Manager, the five years, is this what we agreed on when we met with Mr. Bengal?
If we exceed five years, you get into a legal issue where this becomes a lease and there's property rights. So city attorney, city manager go, you don't exceed five years on a license.
So, but we agreed to this the last time we met.
Yes, sir.
So we have not exceeded the five.
Correct.
So this is not contested, the first one we're voted on here? That's not a contested.
It has been generally requested to go beyond five.
Go beyond.
City staff and your legal counsel said no.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But we don't get to. The reason we're doing this is because you guys make these decisions. I do not set policies. I am just a scribe. The manager will follow whatever three of you say to do. And that's why we're doing this because if you looked at the spreadsheet we had, we did not have, some people weren't reporting on particular issues. This is a way to get it done. When I get through here, I'm going to write it according to what we say tonight. And that will be it, as far as I'm concerned, because we will offer to the Marlins organization what you guys determine this document to be as of tonight.
Correct.
I would like to request that each of the councilmen makes a statement as to whether they favor a particular thing or not favor. And that way, it helps you get that count. If, if, am I understanding right?
Right. And I think that's what the mayor's actually doing, is he's taking one of these one at a time because these are the points of potential contention, not really contention, but disagreement or not a consensus as to what the council wants. And we're going to be looking at nods. That's why I was saying we'll do these one at a time. And if we got three out of the five, that means that's going to be in there.
Correct.
Okay, whatever the decision is, is going to be in there or is not going to be in there, depending on how you come out with this process.
So have you got what you need?
I've got, I've got the five-year term.
Okay.
Let's move ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
The second item was the removal of a 30-day cancellation right and add mandatory mediation. The council wanted to remain, retain the 30-day cancellation, was agreeable to a curing period. Therefore, staff has added a 10-day curing period.
Let me ask a question of the city manager. When we talk about cancellation of contract rights, I'm assuming it would have to be a grievous disagreement?
It would be at council's direction for any reason whatsoever by writing.
And it is our option as to what constitutes?
It'd be at council's discretion for any reason by writing.
Mediation is not the correct term because there is not a third party involved.
You are, as council, the mediator between city staff and any licensee or lessy.
Okay, so the only thing we're talking about is a 10-day delay.
A 10-day curing period if staff has an issue to assure any licensee that they have an opportunity to fix any item that city staff sees as a breach of license. Or, as I've shared with licensees and lessies, if the twins come in and they want to buy your stadium and they want to put MLB here in Morehead City and we have several lessies or leases or contracts to the stadium, you get to separate from those licenses for the greater benefit of this community.
Bill. As far as mediation, I think before the action of termination would happen, I'm sure there would be a lot of mediation going on, starting from, you know, from whatever incident is causing the process to start. So I think there would be plenty of mediation before that happened.
I'm questioning the need for an additional 10-day period. Is that what you're also doing? Or are you comfortable with the 10-day curing period?
I don't know. If that's what it's going to take for somebody to get over, but it's not going to change the act, in my opinion.
I want to ask a question because make sure I understand, Chris, the 10-day curing period is only, comes into the fact that if city staff sees a violation of the licensee, that gives the Marlin organization 10 days to correct that before the beginning of the 30-day cycle?
Correct. And it's our intent to give any licensee 10 days if they have conflict with staff. Again, it also allows and provides this city council, for any reason whatsoever, for the greater good of this community, to separate by writing for any reason. 30 days in writing, thank you for your time. Okay? And again, I've used the example of Major League Baseball comes in and wants to buy and use your stadium for any reason, you can do so without having a 10-day, because there's no 10-day curing period when you decide that the public use of your stadium needs to change.
And if you ever decide to do that, check with me first because we have some grant things in the way. So that example is just an example.
And Chris made a good comment. There's always mediation because anybody can always request to meet with the council over any decision of the staff. The council would be the mediators. Is that correct?
If you're going to do this license agreement that has five years in it, you're not going to just say, "Get out."
Right. No, no.
The bottom line is, it's going to have to be something that is diametrically opposed to what you want that ballpark to be. Okay, you're making some of those decisions here tonight. If that were to occur and we can't work it out with the Marlins because their view of what that ballpark is and our view is different and there's no way to fix that, then you're probably going to want to exercise your 30-day right. But I have no foresight that that will be the case. But I've, I have no foresight that that will be the case.
Okay. The next item, oh, that's right, we need to.
Respectful of the two dialogues that are happening right now. My question to you, Mayor, because I'm not driving the, the meeting seat today. Uh, removal of thirty-day cancellation rights and mandatory mediation. We, as draftors here, your legal counsel, myself, need to know, do you task us with continuing with ten-day curing period? And do you task us with continuing with outright written notice thirty-day cancellation?
The ten-day curing period, is it defined as what Mr. Abell said, is that the?
That is correct. It has plain language, there's a ten-day curing period.
Legally speaking, a cure period is if there's a breach, something in here he's done wrong.
He gets ten days to correct it.
And he needs to get it fixed. Then that makes sure that he understands what our problem is, he has ten days to fix it. But it's not shackles on us, we still have the right, if this, as we're diametrically opposed, to go ahead and give him written without the cure period if it's not a breach or a situation. That is, this agreement says you gotta do this, and we're saying you're not doing this, he's got ten days to fix that.
Do you want both or just one?
What do you mean both?
Uh, that your question back and forth with Bill alluded to the fact that you may be entertaining just thirty-day written notice, all stop.
No, I, I think a person needs to have an opportunity to fix the problem.
Oh, yeah.
Both, got it.
I said both.
Okay?
I agree, I agree, the thirty-day, ten-day cure period.
Yeah, you're not.
I'll agree with the thirty-day.
Agree.
Thank you.
You need to show a hands, or did you say everybody?
We've got it.
We got it.
Okay, the next item, uh, third item was a request to remove the forbearance reference. Prior meeting, the council agreed that this should remain in the agreement, but the Marlins have requested that this be removed, the forbearance.
What is that?
I knew you were gonna ask that. Forbearance is one of those things where I'm gonna let you get by with it this time. But that doesn't keep me from saying the next time you do it, it's a problem. That means we will forbear our right to call it a breach without waiving our right for that same breach to occur again. That's forbearance, we are holding back on a right that we have. But you can't interpret that to mean that that means you've got a free pass on anything that happens in the future. That, it's not a waiver, it protects us from being a waiver because we can forbear in one instance and enforce in the next. Gives you some flexibility on how you want to enforce this document.
I would prefer to maintain flexibility and maintain the forbearance.
And I agree.
I agree.
That's three votes, you got it.
You want, I'll leave it with three.
Well, the only reason I, my question about it, either it's the law or it's not. You know, I mean, you're gonna sit there and say I can do it today, but then next week it's not okay? I mean, you know, either you're gonna, you know, it's, it's gotta be, and we're talking about somebody's thirty-day, you know, we're talking about letting them go. So either, you, you know, you need to let me know now. If I can't go around this table, you let me know today. Don't let me go around five or six times, then all of a sudden, it's not okay.
Well, that's, you're essentially saying what I'm saying, and that is, it might be circumstances where we will forbear by executing one of these things in this contract, we'll forbear from calling you a breach, okay? This one time, but we're not required to do it again.
All right, let me, let me lay a caveat on that. If you do it accidentally, I let it go by. You, you understand what I'm saying, if it's by, if it's by, by fault of not your own and you're still in this situation, then I can understand it. But if you knowingly know that you're doing something that's wrong.
Let me take it back to what we talked about before. If it's a breach.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you wanna say that's a breach, he gets ten days to fix the breach.
Okay.
Okay? If it's a breach and you're gonna say eh, okay, for whatever, we can forbear, we have the right. We do not have the requirement to forbear. Okay, so that's, forbearance is an option of the town that if, for some reason, we don't enforce a paragraph that's in this document.
Don't put it in it.
Well, I don't wanna get in too much into the weeds, but let's say the person that, that's the manager doesn't recognize that something you have done violates this document. And therefore, we didn't enforce that particular piece that's in our document that said you did something wrong because it got biased. Now, if he does it again, this time it didn't get biased, and before, you can't make the argument that because you let me do it once, you have to let me do it twice or three times. Or that part of the document just goes away. Because we forbear bore, intentionally or not, we did not enforce this part of that contract. I'm gonna, this is kinda confusing, it's kinda legal, web. Let me tell you as your attorney, we wanna hold on to that. End of story, but we really wanna hold on to that. I think the objection that we had with the Marlins was forbearance, their idea of what forbearance was was different than mine. We hold on to the option of saying, well, we missed it, but we're not gonna do it again, and that's.
Well, no, I see where you're coming from now. If we, if we didn't catch it, doesn't mean that we let it happen.
That's right. You don't get to do it the next time when we did catch you.
Right, I understand.
We forbore before.
Okay.
And that being the case, is this the one I had three on?
You got four.
Do you want? All in? Okay.
Yes.
We understand what you said and we support what you said.
I'm gonna give you a quiz at the end to see what. No, what I'm saying is, as your legal counsel, you wanna leave that in because it's flexibility in the contract to take care of things that could happen that you don't anticipate.
Okay, we're gonna stay, keep that.
Yeah, the next item, Marlins to provide security rather than the city police. Remember the last meeting that, the Marlins proposed to increase their rent, and we're gonna get into that further and into this, if the city would provide the police protection, is that correct?
In succinctly, very quick, because I know, I know you don't want another legal class in anyway, which I'm, I, you know, I get it. Uh, in short, city police determined the law enforcement presence there, not the lessy, licensee, excuse me.
Yeah, and I feel, and I feel like, uh.
You agreed to that last time?
Yep, and I feel like, um, that's something that it doesn't even need to be to discuss. Uh, Big Rock Stadium, city-owned park, we need to have our city police there to enforce security.
Okay.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Right.
We'll get to it in a second, yeah.
Okay, that's what this paragraph is stating then.
That's almost everybody said from Mr. Blue.
But at the last meeting, he, he raised his rant to provide.
Later in the document, you're gonna get into some of those elements, and if you need to come back to police. But the fundamental for us, when we're drafting this, uh, the police presence. Uh, and if you think about security and police, to us, they're generally one and the same. No licensee may determine, and as you heard me, you all agreed to this last time, who were present. No licensee, um, shall refuse the chief's directive to have two, three, four, five, or fifty.
Now, the actual price, I'm still assuming that once we go through this checklist.
You will get to that, yes, sir.
We'll get to.
You and Buddy are gonna nail down the number.
No, you'll get to that today. It'll be in the second half, if I, if I get, if I get out of the mayor's way, because he's giving me the look. Uh, it, that's generally everyone, Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Okay, got it, that's, uh, all five.
Now, that, that city policy is what you're stating though, that.
Yes, sir.
Police determine all security needs. All right, and everybody raise their hand to that, or?
Mm-hmm, they affirm, yes, sir.
Sports betting on premises, uh, that's been removed, um, because of, uh, way I understood it couldn't be done anyway.
Yeah, the licensee initially, when the special call meeting, removed that for consideration.
Yeah.
Secondarily, okay? Next.
We don't need action on that, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, uh, the request is allow Marlin only sales of advertisement sponsorship within the stadium. Council was favorable for making the advertising and sponsorship seasonally dependent to give all users the same opportunity to advertise a merchandise and would not exceed the Marlins' season.
I agree that all of the participants in the park would have equal rights to advertise during their season.
So can you, can you, um, elaborate a little bit, Chris? And this, so this item here, the Marlins is requesting to, had to sell advertising and they want it for the, to remain.
Year round.
Year round.
When the community college comes in for men's baseball during their season, they would only be able to advertise and place, um, well, sponsorship, sales and sponsorships, chairbacks, et cetera, or advertising during their season. It would not continue past the duration of your license-approved season for that entity, to include the Marlins. The Marlins would not have, uh, that availability for those products after or before their season.
But the Marlins want.
Year round.
They want to exceed that.
The city is asking you to assure that when we write this, you to us are saying that it is seasonally dependent. And you'll see a theme of that continuing for most of these subjects.
Yes, sir.
So how's like?
I, I would say seasonal. I mean, I think everybody that uses the facility should have the right to sell advertising.
Okay.
Same thing, seasonal.
Seasonal.
It's all five.
I mean, how, I mean, I'm, I know someone's looking, is gonna be seeing this, I mean, how would you do it any different? I mean, and I, and I know.
There are all alternatives to this.
Right.
To where if you prefer to give, uh, uh, since the community college is not here, if you preferred to give, um, year-long advertising rights in your park to the Carter Community College, you could do so. But we're asking you to restrict those to any licensee whatsoever, whether it be the Marlins, Community College, or any other entity that, that uses your stadium.
But if you allow, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
If you allow one organization to do it, then how, what does it give the, another organization to come in the same right?
That's city staff's position, it does not, so we're asking you to be seasonally specific.
It doesn't meet, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, the next item, allow Marlins fifteen additional events outside the baseball season each year for other entertainment. Currently the seat, this, the city currently restricts these to baseball-related events only and during the Marlins' season, only to prevent scheduling conflicts with other users and groups. Chris, expand on that, because we talked about, it would probably benefit.
Yes, sir.
The, the.
I, I will be very, very brief, yes, sir. There, there's opportunity there, and I've had some dialogue with all potential licensees, not just the Marlins, that if you're doing something, currently, let's back up, you're only allowed to do currently in the license for the Summer Woodbat League, which is the Marlins, fifteen additional baseball-related events um, in your season, which is city staff's request. It could be outside of your season. Um, the alternative is this, if you're going to do entertainment, which I think you would encourage entertainment. We've had some loose dialogue between myself and the Marlins and Mr. Bangle to say, hey, there is an opportunity for special event resolution. Anytime you wanna do something outside of baseball or outside of your license agreement, you can always approach city council with a special event resolution. You wanna do a carnival, you wanna do a concert, you wanna do something in that Rotary Park or the stadium area. So long as there not a baseball-related conflict, don't incorporate or include that in your license agreement for just baseball. So one more time, just baseball, and then you ask the city outside of that agreement for your special event. That is city staff's preference.
Now, what does Mr. Bangle propose?
Mr. Bangle proposes kindly that, that the city would entertain and do entertainment outside and inside the season. Uh, he is generally absolutely correct, city staff encourages that, but the mechanism to do that is what we're talking about today. We're asking city staff to not include fifteen baseball or other special events inside of this license agreement. Break those off outside. And just like you do anybody who wants to use Rotary Park or the baseball stadium, have them come to us and you with a special event request. His request is to do fifteen other related events, not related to baseball or related to baseball, during and after his season. Inside, inside and outside.
As clarity, he has to provide us a baseball schedule by February first, I think.
I'll check, I'll, we'll look, I'd hate to court you on that one. For clarity, yes, he has to provide us with a baseball schedule at a time and date prior to the season, yes.
Okay, would he ask the fifteen special events at the same time?
No, you, right now.
Or it can come up at any.
Right now, we generally allow fifteen special baseball-related events. He's very good about having a conversation with city staff, I would like to do X, Y, and Z on these dates. He does coordinate very well with city staff and sharing those dates and times to us.
Yeah, with that being said, Chris, um, I'm willing to compromise on this one and allow him to have those fifteen additional events outside of the baseball season.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen additional, any events or fifteen additional baseball-related events?
Fifteen additional city-approved events.
Yeah, I say any events, long.
So that'd be any?
Longest city approved, yeah.
Within the season or outside the season?
Outside of the season.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bangle, um, has, and I like what you said, Chris, and that's good to hear that, uh, he's good with, uh, communicating with staff. And I know he has some great ideas and about bringing, um, entertainment to the city. Uh, with me being allowed, um, voice for more things to do for our youth and families. I wanna support this, because I think this will add to, uh, having more things to do for our youth and families and providing entertainment within Moorehead City.
Not to provide a counterpoint, but if you enter into other license agreements, you've now allowed one licensee to have broad stroke for fifteen, in this license agreement, you've allowed them fifteen days outside of their pocket of days. And they're allowed fifteen events anytime, anyplace. You get community college, um, or another entity in here, then they're playing baseball in your season, then we have to coordinate those days. So you've warranted the licensee, Buddy Bingle, fifteen more days for the Marlins to operate any special event, anytime. As so long as you coordinate with the city, that's a positive, I understand that.
Yeah.
Community college comes in before or after, whatever their baseball season's gonna be, now we're in conflict.
Yeah.
I'll also add, once we get to the numbers, that's for no additional charge.
Correct.
Yeah, no disrespect to the community college, but, uh, Mr. Bangle, his organization has been here for fifteen years, have a tremendous amount of support from the community, and I would like to honor that with, uh, allowing him to have the fifteen additional events.
Okay, I heard your voice.
So, so Chris, in the current, in the current lease agreement we have with the Marlins' organization, they.
License.
Your license agreement?
Yes, sir.
Yes. They, um, they have fifteen additional days.
Baseball-related events.
Baseball-related.
Yes, sir.
So now they want to expand non-baseball.
Could, yes.
Or either or. Either or. But right now, and is that within their season or is that with any time during the year?
Right now, uh, I have to go back and look specifically in the current license. I remember and recall, because I always usually have it in my back pocket, as most staff does, it's within the season. And I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong.
Let's go back to where, when we first started talking about it some years ago. The point was, the Bengals wanted to have, uh, bands with electric guitars and speakers and all that. And we said no, in respect to the fact it's surrounded by residential neighbors. But an acoustic musical group was permitted. If we were to adopt this terminology, would, what control would we have on it?
In the Marlins' defense, they have not had received this year to me, it's, well, back up, since in the three years I've been here, no public nuisance elements since I have been here. In addition, they're very sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood. They do do, um, and, and I know Buddy maybe listened to me intently, if I get it wrong, I apologize. Um, pre-game acoustical entertainment, and if it's amplified, it is not egregious. Again, he's very good, and his staff are very good about being generally sensitive to the area. He's not having Leonard Skinner overly amplified with fifty speakers on a rack and lights and sound and lasers. Um, so it is aesthetic to the location and within the package that we've given him before. So in his kind defense, he does a very good job of that, in my opinion.
So we don't think it would be.
I don't think.
An issue with the fifteen special.
Specific to just this licensee and what his request is, I cannot speak for everybody, but we frame things for the happenstance, and the happenstance is city staff's request. So I don't see it being an issue, but it is your decision, not necessarily mine.
So in, I've got it, I've got the current license agreement in front of me.
Sure.
Other events, by February first of each year during the term of this agreement, he has allowed fifteen additional events, limited to baseball camps or other traditional baseball-oriented activities.
Correct.
So he's allowed fifteen additional days for baseball camps or other traditional baseball.
That concurs what I just told you before.
Yeah, it's limited to baseball though. You know, Mr. Bangle, he has ideas to bring other entertainment, other forms of entertainment to Moorehead City. Um, some of the, the things he's mentioned to me have been clean and fun ideas, and I think would be good for the city. So I'm for allowing it, long as, you know, we get approval of city staff for each event.
I've heard from just Mr. Styles. I've heard from just Mr. Styles.
And I, this is almost a multi-part question, because I'm gonna have to write this thing. Does it come to council, does the Parks and Rec director screen the activities? How do you want to determine something that's not baseball-related that goes on in the stadium area?
Which is why we prefer a special event resolution, I've heard you loud and clear, I get it, I get it, staff's recommendation is not that.
If we, you know, we're starting to cloud the issue here, we're not talking about entertainment, we're supposed to be talking about baseball.
And that's the way it's written.
Okay.
But he wants to open the door to more.
Well, when that door is open, we need to talk about that on another level. In my opinion, we're talking about baseball, we're not talking about an entertainment company, I mean, if he wants to do that, let's start with another contract. But I'm saying let's deal with baseball-related activities, that's what it is, the baseball field, and we're here to discuss baseball. And as we keep going into these other things, it clouds the issue, let's stay focused, if I think the the baseball activities, if he wants to do baseball things, I think that's fine. But if you start stepping outside this contract and setting them in other areas, you may have to start back and set up different guidelines and all kinds of different things.
I think what you're saying is that the staff recommendation should be that we ask them to do baseball-related things in season, if you want something out of that, then it's a resolution.
Absolutely.
That would follow sort of the lines of when we do a fishing tournament, you outline what's gonna take place, when, what you need and all that. And that keeps it cleaner for staff, is that what I'm understanding, Chris?
Yes, sir, in several ways, plus the legality of that, yes.
I think it makes sense.
Well, I mean, it's the way it reads it now, I mean, it reads that he gets fifteen additional days and it's for baseball camps, baseball activities, and it's all done coordinated with the Recreation Department based on availability of the premises.
And anything else is a resolution.
Our request, if favorable, if majority is favorable, is that to be in the season, not extending beyond their season, the licensee's season. You don't have language in there right now that defines that, that's an open-to-staff interpretation, it ain't forbearance, but it's generally.
I mean, that's the way, I mean, and I'm interpreting the the current listener, I would say this is within his season.
But we like it written down.
Uh, you're right, and again, if he would like to use it outside of the season, he can petition the Parks and Rec and use it like any other organization outside of his season.
Respectful, I've heard from Mr. Baloo, I think I'm pretty clear on Mr. Walker, I've heard from Mr. Styles.
You heard from me.
I've heard from Mr. Taylor.
I agree too, the uh anything other outside of the baseball needs to be a resolution.
And again, I'm basing what I'm saying right now according to the current lease agreement that we have with the Marlins' organization. That's exactly what we're referring to right now, it does, it says baseball, baseball camps and traditional baseball activities.
Got it, four to one. Okay, uh, Mr. Styles.
Mr. Styles, okay. Thank you.
This was at a little, we couldn't, we couldn't come to a consensus at our last discussion about the city approval of the merchandise and product sales in the stadium. I think there, there was a mixed agreement that saying this, that we should not oversee that, and then there was maybe a comment or two that we should oversee anything sold in there.
Man, what do I all say, I don't, I don't.
Mayor Jones, I'm this one right here, um, I feel like uh we should oversee the merchandise um and have it reviewed by city manager Chris Turner and uh Parks and Rec Director Jessica Mayo um annually to determine if the merchandise that has been sold is suitable for, to keep in line with our theme for family-friendly environment.
I agree that we need to have review of products that's being sold on our property and what image that presents to the community, and that we do not exclude the term family-friendly from the contract.
Got it, that, you actually spoke, he spoke to one of the last ones in the list.
He did, yeah.
So, and and.
Well, just related, but it is related.
And the city manager and the Parks and Rec director has the final say?
Yeah. Yeah, current draft language is uh because the city is a volume of business, ultimately, it always rests with the city manager for every resolution, when you have the seafood festival, when you have Big Rock, and streets get closed, even when Chief Dixon says that the, your current city manager has the final determination for street closures and other elements. Similar in theme to leases and license, the city manager being the executive for you is the ultimate deciding factor, however, in the license, the Parks and Recreation Director gets the first swipe. There's the ten-day curing period we just talked about, so Parks and Recreation Director says, we don't like broccoli being sold, you shouldn't sell broccoli because it's not healthy, and that, going forward, so short is Parks and Recreation Director is your first point of contact, Mr. Bingle knows in this license, he can always call me, and he has, we have great dialogue. Um, he can always call me if he doesn't like a decision of staff and if he needs something to move forward, but right now in the license, excuse me, the lease, license, there, I even room on so, license, um, the Parks and Rec Director is the current point of contact.
Now, Chris, does this go for, um, because I see on the line here it says food products and other miscellaneous items were not discussed, does this go for uh things that are sold out of concession too as far as food and drink items?
Yes, and that is, yes, short answer is yes, I won't go too far into that, because there's been some complaint to the city, and and fairness to Mr. Bingle, he hasn't seen those complaints. Uh, it would be food products on a public park. In his defense, he has bridged to me, we don't regulate food products, et cetera, to other special event resolutions, but most of those are not done in a public park with exception. When you do a special event resolution for seafood festival and for Big Rock, there are parks that you are using that allow alcohol. What you're doing in that resolution is waiving your ordinance, waiving your local laws to do the thing in the place. A um, doing my legal test, a license does not waive the ordinances that you have, a resolution does, because you resolve to waive, sell alcohol in a public park for seafood festival, a license doesn't automatically waive every ordinance that we have on a specific thing. So to your question, uh, yes, it's specific to public parks, you're regulating, and we're asking city staff's recommendation is to regulate any licensee about what they sell in your park, the same way the Health Department has some guidance as to the preparation of food, we're asking, city staff is asking you to consider in the, in the license to proof and regulate all product sales. This is not a First Amendment attack, this is one that public safety is our utmost, and we want to see what's happening um in the sale of that. With regard to that, it will have to be, city staff will not be able to circumvent state law and current state law about products that are available commercially and by retail right now. You might not like some of them, but they're available and and uh right now, they're available to sell. This would permit you to go, even though that they are legal to sell, you must proof those with us to make sure the family-friendly public premise is satisfied, does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
I know I'm a little bit clandestine with that, but that's in defense of he having not received the complaints that some of you have, okay?
Okay, I'm doing a head count again. We have Mr. Styles on record, we have Mr. Taylor on record saying that they will be filtered, it's my general term, by our folks as to what they can do inside for merchandising and food products included, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes, yes, others?
Yes, yes.
What, what, he wants to sell hot dogs, you got to go get permission to sell a hot.
Gotta give me a list.
Gotta give a list.
Gotta give me a list.
I'm in you, but guess what's not gonna be a problem? That, that's gonna be, we're only looking for the things that are controversial.
Hot dogs are not gonna be a problem.
Yeah, management changes, I'm looking for some stability.
I, yeah, I'm okay, you guys argue it out, I, this is gonna say what you say, not what I say.
You would be the mediator, council will be the mediator, should the city staff and any licensee.
All right.
I, I just think the food is a stretch.
Well.
I, I was including beverages too, though.
We can, we can put it on the table of what we're talking about, some people have taken objection to certain beverages that have Delta Nine in it.
And RFP.
And those are being sold there, and it's legal, there's no, we can't say that what he's doing is illegal, and we have some stuff in our document already says.
Will you expand on what you just said?
Hemp product, byproducts, that does not reach the level of being illegals, not on the schedule, we can't bust anybody for selling it, and it's all okay, okay? There's a lot of law out there.
So has that been sold there?
My understanding is it is, but this would keep it from being sold there if that's what our determination is, that's why I got to food.
And it's perfectly, it's perfectly legal.
Absolutely.
Uh, as long as the content is under three.
Point three.
Three percent, uh, three hundred, no, point three percent of the THC. And the only reason why I know that, because I was in the business at one time.
The North Carolina Farm Act allows any hemp product that's natural to be sold in North Carolina, you see those in, I don't want to call it a, a local grocery here, but they're in almost every local retailer or grocer, be able to do so, and you would be able to regulate the sale of those um beneath what is North Carolina state law by saying carte blanche, any product, any item sold in your public park has to be checked with city staff before you do so.
I guess that would be under miscellaneous items.
To be, to include, um, I'm gonna say it wrong, because I'm not a participant with this, kratom, 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 uh.
Kratom.
Kratom, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
What is kratom?
Um, E, E sigs.
Well, the state legislator's working on that, too.
There are age limits to these products, uh, so the products that are available to the public do have age limits, I'm positive. Uh, I haven't seen it myself, and I'm positive that licensees would be compliant without selling those to age-restricted products. Um, I haven't seen um those vape products distributed in your park, um, but just to be fair to any licensee that ever enters in there, you would probably want to have some guidance in a public park when those items are being sold.
Question is, um, it's legal, but it does it stay consistent with our family-friendly thing, that's the question.
Same thing with beer. They're gonna have a box, but yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, I guess we, well, I guess uh years ago, council then um decided that beer stays within the family-friendly thing, but how far are we gonna want to stretch that, though? I mean, you start allowing one thing, then it could be stretched into a whole nother thing.
And we're not saying you have to do this, I mean, we've gotten comments, okay, that that this was objectionable, I will tell you that it was objectionable for the alcohol it began with, so I'm not saying that this should not go through and not be a worry for anybody.
It was just the last time that we discussed it was merchandise.
Correct.
Now, tonight, we've gotten into food and.
Only because of this one issue.
And other miscellaneous items.
Correct.
What's kind of threading a little bit, last time, it was, it was merchandise.
That's correct.
And now we've gotten into food and and.
And last time, we didn't have everybody here.
Yes.
The first time we talked about it, it was merchandise, T-shirts, and RFP drinks, and then later, this THC came up.
Yes, sir.
And the state says you're not gonna walk away stone for bringing one of these things, so that, you're not.
Can you, can you come a little bit closer to your mic, because I can't.
Sure, the, the, surprise you can't hear me, but anyway, the state has not made it illegal, because they don't consider it to be a mind-altering drug, it doesn't rise to that level, it's a, and I'm not sure what value there is of having it in the drink. But the state has says, it's no big deal, okay, and you guys can say, it's no big deal. It's only brought to your attention because it was brought to our attention, that some people object to that when there's kids there. And kids can't have it, it's illegal for them to have it, so as long as they're enforcing the law, okay, and only selling that product to adults, then it's probably not terribly offensive, but you need to be informed that we have heard what we have heard, and then you guys decide what you want to do with it.
Where it has come up through parents and school system about concerns of whether we do sell this product, and it got drifted up to the JCPC Council, asking the JCPC to uh.
Way in.
Way in with a resolution that they would object to it, so I don't think it's embraced by the community. And if we have a family-friendly establishment, I think we should sell products embraced or recognized by the community capable.
This option, the way it's written, is not dealing with that one product, I don't know what's coming next, okay? Maybe gummies, okay, and I don't know if they're even selling those, that's why it is a filtering process of what this town wants to be allowed to be sold out there, whether it would be things associated with garments or whether it's food, we're not talking about hot dogs, it's things that for some reason created a controversy, and it's one of those things where we will know, or we will come to you with things where you have to decide whether this is okay or that's not okay, and this being built into the license, the principle of it is, if you run up on these things, do you want to have the ability to restrict the sale of certain things because of whatever your reasons are, sure part, you get to.
Well, just, just for discussion purposes, the, the concern that I have and the, and the concern I raised at the last meeting, we're just putting a lot of pressure on the city manager and, and the, the um, the director or the department head. So what happens if they change and they allow something that the city council doesn't like, or vice versa? Where, where does that come into play?
Through the manager, through the person that said it was okay and it's against policy, and that person has got to look for, I won't speak for the manager, but he has the right to reprimand that individual on a scale of possibilities.
You're asking about succession planning, when Chris Turner, hopefully, can leave this place in a very positive way, is Jessica Mayo and/or her successor going to continue this dialogue in spirit, that's why you have those two right there, okay? You've got an assistant city manager and an assistant city manager in duo, so the succession of your thought and your will resides with them. It's gonna take new city manager, new assistant city manager, another new assistant city manager, and a brand-new Parks and Recreation Director to get to what you're alluding to, that the will of the council is not upheld, that's why we have chain of command and succession planning.
Mayor Pro Tim, um, what, what pressure, though, what pressure are we putting on Chris?
I'm just saying, not, not really, maybe pressure is not the right word, I'm just saying, we're just putting, we're just putting the burden, we're putting the burden on them.
But that's what we pay him.
And then with someone else, but, but then again, how about if he approves something or disapproves something that's not the will of the council, then where does it go from there?
Well.
Okay, let's just say, we're gonna throw out there the use of a hot dog, how about of a certain, and, and I'm just using it for an example, okay, let's use a hot dog, well, he says, well, I, I don't like that brand, and he wants this brand, but this, the council thinks is okay for that brand, I mean, who has the final say?
But we can put.
Can we over, can we overturn or override his decision?
Yeah, we could put it in a con, yeah, we could put it in a contrast.
That can happen, respectful, I know where your dialogue is going, you, you like to know that the what-else are not what-else anymore and that they're absolutes.
Absolute, right.
However, that happens in anything and anywhere in the city, that a uh statutory appointing authority, unfortunately, he or she that sits in this chair leads the charge for you in almost every single thing, with the exception of one or two things he does and one or two things he does, I cannot oversee it, and him.
Because it's just like the T-shirt, I mean, it started with a T-shirt.
I understand.
And you might approve of something that's on a T-shirt, and I might look at you and say, Mr. Turner, I don't approve of.
Then you get a new city manager.
Or vice versa, I might say, well, Chris, I don't see anything wrong with that, and you look at me and say, you do.
Right.
That, so who has the final?
You do ultimately.
Ultimately.
Yeah, you get a new city manager.
So if a licensee comes in here and he doesn't approve the decision you've made, then we can override your decision.
That's correct, you're a city council, you tell me to do what, I execute your will.
Three out of five.
Correct.
Always keep that in mind, it takes more than one person, more than two persons to make a decision.
To the mayor pro Tim, it's an excellent dialogue, you want, you want to have some, some kind assurance that the will of council is executed.
Sure.
You got one, two, three right here, and two chiefs I know are not gonna deviate from jilling your will if it's legally compliant, and I cannot control him, you do.
So with what you're asking here, does a licensee have, have the ability, if a decision's made by you to come to council and say, can I sell this or?
Right now, it's unregulated, we're asking you your opinion, uh, do you prefer to have these products in all of their potentials uh approved by the city before sale in a public park?
I would say by city council. I, I would, I would like to have some kind of assurance that the city council has the final say.
I've heard from you.
I agree with that.
I think it's sufficient to have let the city manager say that, and then if there's an exception to that, that it comes to the county.
I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to make sure that the city council has the final, that licensee has the option, if he does not agree with the city manager's decision. If he does not agree with the city manager's decision, that he can take it to the council and the council has the final say. I don't, but I don't want the person sitting in the city manager's position or the Parks and Rec to have the final say. I want it to be able to come to the council for a final say.
There's never been stated thus far.
Say that again?
It, that is not the way we describe the steps it takes to approve a product. It would stop first at the Parks and Recreation Direct. Her recommendation was floated to the city council.
City man.
City manager, I'm sorry. If we didn't like his idea, it comes to the council where the, the buck stops here. And that's what you want, the buck stops there.
That's right.
But we don't want to burden this council with being the first point of contact for every dispute about whether you sell orange fresh or.
That ain't going, even on my radar. That's not what I'm referring to.
Okay.
No, sir.
So I think we can all say that we agree that supervision and with the guidelines. It stops first at the Parks and Rec, goes to the city manager, buck stops here at the council.
Yes, sir.
And have that in the contract.
And there's no doubt in my mind that Mr. Bingle, his organization is not going to put anything out there detrimental.
Absolutely.
Uh, to anybody or at, or not even to the city. I don't think so either right now, he has the right to do anything that's legal.
Yes.
Period. If you want to pull back on that, this is the way you do it. But anything that's legal, he can do out there. If it doesn't violate an ordinance or a state law or a federal law, he can do whatever he wants out there. Unless you have this kind of filter. And if you don't want it, that's okay with me, like you said, it's less work for all of us. If you just say, let him go with it, that's fine. You kind of did that with the shirts and things, okay? This is, it's all bundled up into this one thing, we're going to have some say over what goes on in the park.
But we did that with the shirts before, correct?
You, in discussions, yes.
Yes, but not officially.
Maybe we should break it out of here then.
Whatever you guys want to do.
I need a cons, sorry, I need general consensus on the item.
I remember last discussion, the, the, uh, shirts, merchandise was really not an issue. But now talking about these hemp infused drinks that have made, made it an issue.
Well, yeah, it is an example of what could be an issue. What, what decided, I, this is me paraphrasing, you decided you didn't want to get into the business and decided what is a good T-shirt and what is a bad T-shirt. And that the community is the community and they'll get back to you with whatever the problem is. There's also some things probably within its own licensing that I have no idea about with the bat team that's involved. But you decided, and that, and I think Mr. Bingle made the comment, it's a first amendment right. If you think it's this way and I think it's that way, who's right? And you basically said, I don't want anything to do with it. So you said, let him go.
I was oppositional though, last meeting.
I know, I know you are, but now we're here, we're talking about putting a filter on what he can sell in the park. Merchandise is one of those parts. So do we not want to do that? We do want to do it, tell us tonight because this document is going to reflect what you said.
And remember, this is a small business, if you will. And that there's not so many products that he's going to sell in this environment. It's not like we're staffing or stocking Walmart. We're striking a concession stand in T-shirts. So I don't think it will be an onerous load for staff to look at your products and say, okay, these look okay, let's go with them.
I agree.
In the, I, because I can't take away from the mayor, he's driving the boat. And if I may, mayor, in the spirit of expediency and you got to get dialogue, what you're discussing now, sales of any type should be approved by city on any public property and recreation space, period. You want to break those out or you're okay with the sentence and framing I just gave you? One more time, sales, city staff recommends and contests, that, that's not contest, but that the recommendation is, sales of any type should be approved by the city on any public property and public recreation space.
Uh, uh, well, that's, because we're, we're just talking about this lease. Because if, by resolution, they can sell anything out there.
Correct.
Anywhere in the city, not just, I'm out.
If you decide to amend this agreement and specifically list some things in there, then you can take that off the table.
Right.
This is the filter process for us to make sure that nothing, I don't want to use the term, there's something going on in the park that some people take offense to. But there's always going to be something going on.
Always, yes.
So what filtering mechanisms do you want other than illegality? Right now, if it's legal, they can do it. Do you want to have more control than legality?
Well, and also in reality, all we're, all we're controlling is within city owned property.
Correct.
All this stuff that we're trying to, to, to control can be sold outside the city.
Yes, sir.
Property can be sold anywhere within the park.
The state's already said that.
Yeah.
We're just talking about what happens on our premises.
All right.
Where we're at.
I've heard from Mr. Stiles, uh, we know where his position is, we can draft from his. Um, I have not heard from Mr. Abell, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Baloo with Clarity and Mr. Walker. I need to hear from each of the four of you.
I think I've clearly stated that we could review the product. It would go from Parks and Rec to you, to the council.
Understood, so aligned with Mr. Stiles, thank you, sir.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, as long, as long as again, the, the city council has the final approval.
That's three.
I, I'll, I'll go along with that.
That's four.
Harvey?
Yeah, I'm good, good.
It's unanimous, okay?
That was excruciating, hopefully it will be as much as panel.
Okay, uh, the next item, the ready to drink liquor drinks, RTDs.
I can help with that one. Uh, last council session now, I have heard from each of you individually, that was a, uh, that was a general unanimous agreement to exclude that from any license request.
Yeah, and also that would, that would coincide with everything we've just been discussing in the previous item.
Unless there's kind of a point, there's not, okay?
Not a point there.
Got it?
Uh, you had a unified license with Carter Community College.
Uh, again, if I may share, just added context, uh, having spoken to almost all of you, please correct me if I'm in, if I'm wrong. Um, it is your desire to have a separate license agreement with every entity and not conjoin, adjoining or overlap.
Yes, separate license.
Correct.
Yes.
Anybody disagree?
Got it.
All right, office space, dedicated office space on or near the stadium. Um, I know I've had a conversation with people also that we kind of agree that he needs his office space and if we, uh, demo it to build something else.
Yes, sir.
We wouldn't need to relocate him somewhere else.
Point of contention is year round availability of office space, the Mizel property, or seasonally dependent. Right now, the fourth draft, fifth draft that we have says that the licensee current Marlins, the Marlins and Marlins only can use that location. Um, until such time as the city raises the building and or repairs or replaces it with something else.
Again, I think at this point, it needs to be, uh, uh, seasonal, in other words, for his license.
Okay.
That's my, uh, two cents worth.
Now, and, I mean, and, and the way this started is we had a house that the city obtained and it was empty. And we allowed him to use the space for his season. Now we have other.
Potential licensees.
That want to use that.
May want to use.
May want to use that, so ask, what we're asking now is, he could use it for his season.
Correct.
But then after his season, it is open for other organizations with the potential of them using the same space.
Correct.
If that space is available.
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, two people can't use spaces.
No, you're not.
That's right, that's what we're saying, so that's, that's why this has kind of changed. Because we have other potential organizations that might want to use the facility. And we, you know, allowing him to be there year round, it, it is going to be a conflict. If, if we allow him to stay.
Year round.
Year round.
It's definitely a need to share it seasonally with whoever comes. The question that I have, just for my own, make sure I understand it. It's a way it is to phrase it, we are planning to raise the building, to demolish the existing structure. And when it's demolished, the new facility would be set up seasonally. Let's assume that we don't demolish it because we have other capital needs and, you know, we're, we just ain't got to it yet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Would, should we consider in the write-up that in the, when the event that we have another participant at the field? A second team of some sort that's effective, no one has it exclusively?
We have the, so short answer is yes, we would ask in the five year license agreement you have now to be very clear that it's seasonally dependent for it, for the use of that space. Um, the caveat that, you know, you get to have it until the next crew comes in is a difficult one for he and I to draft. And, uh, he can draft anything, it'd be difficult to say, hey, in your license agreement during this five years, we might have another person and you get to keep the house until they come online. Our preference is, it's establish it now for the duration of the five year license, the Mizel property is seasonally dependent. If you're favorable for that, because I don't want to counteract what you just said.
No, I just want it to be clear so there's not any argument later.
Sure.
So do you need, need a yes that it is seasonally dependent?
I'm clear on where you, I'm clear on where you stand, yes, sir, I got, I'm tracking.
I've got you, got I, so Lee?
I'll take over, Jerry.
All right, um, all in favor of year round?
Year round, okay.
Uh, all in favor of seasonally?
Seasonally. I say everybody, okay?
Sorry about that.
Uh, the continued use of non-city structures upon the city stadium property to allow Marlins to write to make capital improvements and, and or decorate the stadium.
I can frame it up pretty quick because you can see some definition below there, just kind of help you out. We're talking about, uh, Conex boxes, sheds and structures that are not owned by the city that were brought onto that property. I don't want to belabor how they got there, that's prior, that's pre-Chris Turner. Um, but the Conex boxes being used, uh, is not owned by the city. There are other shed structures that are, uh, used for storage and selling of merchandise. City's recommendation would be require the removal and or donation of those items for, for, um, our standard purpose, um, to the city. The way it works right now, if there is an improvement across any of our parks, put a soccer goal there, you've seen this Seashore Soccer League. If they buy a soccer goal and place it upon your property for use, they donate that to the city, to the public. It's not to the city for our use, we get to have it, it's to the public for their use. Right now, those structures exist upon your city, upon your baseball stadium, um, and they're, I'm not going to say they're not insured, well, they're not. Their, their contents inside are at risk. If it burns down and there's a ton of jerseys in there, we cannot be held liable for that. Even more so, there's a risk to those structures not being built by the city for all safety reasons. There's a cabal of things that we don't like, and having those structures there is not okay. And we're going to, when we renovate the stadium this year, whether you say in this license or not, we're going to ask the licensee, the Bing, Mr. Bingle and the Marlins to remove those. And he will be allowed to put them back unless you tell me that that is not okay. Staff strongly request that there be no additional structure on city property unless you ask to do a capital improvement and we approve of it. Two, that you donate it to us and we will remove it at cost, or three, you're not allowed to have it all together. What's happening with stadium renovation right now, you're getting ten by ten box times two, uh, right below, right below the press box. So you'll have two insets that could potentially be used for merchandise locations. I, in Mr. Bingle's defense, even though he's not here, I will defend and say that he has bridged to me, it's not large enough. And my, uh, our suggestion back to him is, uh, merchandise sales trailer would be in your favor, which is an adequate expense to him, I understand that. But the merchandising sales trailer, think of it like a food truck for merchandise, you get to bring it on, bring it off, bring it on, bring it off without having any infrastructure. The Conex box right now, unbeknownst to Daniel, Chris and Sandy, had wire run to it and it has power, what else? Anything else? Okay? Um, and then there's been miscellaneous construction that, that, just like miraculous fence permits across, excuse me, fences built across the city, they pop up and we are not aware of it. Um, you're thinking, wait a minute, don't you monitor the stadium? Yes, we do, but then there's some things that happened to the quiet hour of the night that we were not aware of. And we're asking Conex boxes and sheds to be removed.
Well, I, number one, they should have never been out there to begin with.
Understood.
Uh, so yes, I agree that they, the only thing that needs to be on city property is city property. And if he wants to bring in a, um, a trailer to sell merchandise, that's the way to do it, the way I look at it.
I, I have respect for Daniel and Mr. Bingle, I apologize because I'm, I'm interrupting him, my apologies. Again, I will have to defend Mr. Bingle's intentions. His intention is, uh, provide as much space as possible to sell as much merchandise as possible so that he can make good profit to do so. Um, we've had the unfortunate dialogue, it's not my job for you to make profit, it's my job to protect public property. Having fifteen sheds and Conex boxes, I cannot generally allow that on public property unless you ask us to do so. So I will stand back and hear your dialogue.
When we have Conex boxes and food trailers and stuff like that. And we're going into an arrangement where we're have, trying to convert this to a multi-use field to bring more baseball opportunities, more recreation opportunities in our city. In the agreement, do we need to say that that is seasonally conditioned and that merchandise trailer has to be removed at the end of their season?
Yes.
So you're going to take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you need to hear from the council on this one?
That you're favorable for city staff requiring that any licensee, to include the community college, shall not bring a fixed structure to the park, place it there and leave it for storage. In other words, just like merchandise and products, we regulate anything that goes into the park.
All right, they, the Marlins request to keep it there, but.
The Marlins have requested to keep it there for storage and their use, um, I don't say in perpetuity because it sounds bad, without, without a sunset.
Year round.
Year round.
All right, well, let's go ahead and, and indicate, yeah.
You're in favor of what? What we just talked about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Restricting structures, seasonally dependent.
And it removes the.
Approved by city staff.
Can I, can I, can the current structures that are there now, can they be converted over to city?
Yes, any, Daniel and I have discussed that, a, any of those items, I think it's like four or five that we have, can be donated to the city. And if we are not sufficient with its structural stability and the things that are going on with it, um, there's one or two of them, I think Daniel and I looked at, that we're okay with. You donate to the city, you're going to get a tax credit for it because you're making a donation to the, the city itself. Um, we would keep it, um, and make sure it's compliant with all of our rules, regs and standards. You could donate it to the city.
It's just the licensee couldn't use it exclusively, it would have to be.
You're, you're spot on, your dog's hunting on that one, hundred percent. So community college or, uh, high school or a junior college could also use that structure if you donate it to the city. And it is up to the, is up to the structure, I mean, it's not our property right now, it's up to that entity to donate it to us, they can yank it if they want to.
I can see in the future that the, uh, community college comes to the ballpark to play. And they want to bring their trailer, food trailer, and set it up and supply the concession stand. Do we have anything in there that when their season is over, they remove everything?
This would be it.
But we got that covered.
We will, if, uh, three or more of you say yes.
Two of us have.
Got it, tracking.
Lee? Is there a third?
Yeah, I'm, I'll be the third. I think this, this is consistent with the office space being seasonal.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's all consistent.
And fourth is Mr. Walker, I saw his hand.
I mean, I don't know how we can not be consistent here with what we've done.
I'll take it unanimous.
Unanimous it is, thank you, sir.
Uh, city to assume cost of garbage utility, that's already been handled.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Uh, Marlins request a reduction in license fee from thirty-six thousand, twenty-five thousand.
Uh, again, uh, uh, being fair to Mr. Bingle, because he's not here, the reduction was the reduction in revenue. When you reduce the trailers, you reduce his ability in his mind to make that revenue, um, in addition to that, additional. Um, in addition to that, additional restrictions in his, additional restrictions in this license as it exists right now inhibit his ability to make even more profit, so he is suggested prior and during the July first special call meeting, to have a thirty-six thousand dollar all-in and always. Um, he has now suggested that that reduce back down to twenty-five thousand. Where do you exist right now? You're at twenty-five thousand. I'm going to tell you that the city, uh, and city staff do prefer any monetary, we prefer monetary value as high as it will go, but I have to be brutally honest, and when I say I don't care, that's, that's not tongue-in-cheek, but we put in more money than any license could contribute. You will not match what the city contributes to that stadium. Right now, on just, I've, I've said before, at hard cost, you're at sixty thousand dollars, paper, toilet, um, products that are going inside the stadium, so thirty-six or twenty-five or fifty-four or a dollar is not going to match what the city expends right now, and that is only on hard cost. If you ask city staff right now for what is the labor cost of that, that's police officers, fire, EMS and, uh, Daniels and Parks and Recreation staff that, that manage that park.
Well, correct, correct me if I'm...
Building your grounds, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I, I was thinking at that special call meeting where originally it was either twenty-five or twenty-six thousand, I don't remember the figure, he himself brought it up to thirty-six thousand to include law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
And that equated to, when we talk some more, starting from...
No, you go ahead.
That twenty-five thousand of it was basically the rent, and the other money was, uh, for policemen. Now, we never asked the question of Chris and staff, well, if we have two officers out there from, can't remember the hours, but we expect some hours, will eleven or twelve thousand dollars pay the cost for policemen? It looks like to me he's trying to afford paying for policemen altogether.
The short answer to that is if you read along towards the bottom, uh, the short answer to that is that thirty-six thousand dollars would not incur the soft cost, staff cost in total, police, fire, EMS and building and services, it would not come close.
And some of our decisions this evening have restricted his income.
That's correct, yeah.
Sure.
Probably significantly.
Yeah, significantly, yeah.
So your point of, so your point of request from the city staff is, at what price and if this is all-in, do you want him to, or excuse me, not him, you want any licensee, because this will be a mirror for others as well. What we do for one licensee, we would not like to diverge and do different for someone else.
Well, we ask all people that use our property and require police to pay for them.
Through extra-duty solutions, yes, sir. What is your will for a license in this public park to be applied to everyone, um, going forward? Uh, but again, in Mr. Bingle's defense, he suggested thirty-six thousand dollars now reduced down to twenty-five because of revenue, potential revenue restrictions. What is your will?
Then would, you know, at one time, it was said that the price was twenty-five thousand. And I believe you, Derek and, and, uh, Chris said, well, you've, even though we never ever charged Marlins for using the Mizell house, we'd go ahead and give them a five thousand dollar goodwill credit.
That is correct, yes, sir.
So they got it down to twenty thousand.
Yes.
If you do the goodwill and I'm not thrilled with that idea since we never charged them anywhere, but if we did that, I think it's more fair that they're paying twenty thousand for the rent and we figure out how much two policemen cost for those hours that work. And the license fee would become the combination of those two things.
Not to muddy the waters, but we're gonna have to do it today because he and I love specifics. Uh, the cost of extra-duty solutions at a certain price point could expand if the attendees exceed one thousand people and chief, deputy chief or appointed individual said you need three.
Yeah, and our contract should allow it.
Yeah, well, yeah, let me just say the big picture, do we want a ball program out there or not? I mean, we, we, we keep...
I know your frustration, but I need to hear the answer.
Yeah, I know, and I'm just saying it to the group and to the audience, I mean, if we don't want a ball program out there, just say no, the, the money's not the issue.
Right.
Now, the money's the issue to our Leesee, because they're, they're out there trying, uh, they're, they're providing a service and they're trying not to lose money out there, I don't know how much money they make. Uh, I know how much it costs to fund one of those, uh, seasonal, uh, wooden bat teams. But I mean, we, we, tonight, we were, we're cutting his income and we're increasing his cost.
So does this...
Where do we go with it?
Well, let me, because I'm, I'm, and I want to make sure I'm clear. The, uh, what he's asking the twenty-five, the re- reduced fee from thirty-six to twenty-five would still include these items listed here?
Yes, sir, all-in.
Two police officers, other than the fact that, uh, Chief Dixon
Could expand.
Deputy Chief Tuttle says, oh, you need one more.
That's correct.
Then he's on the tab for paying that additional person.
Right now, as we understand it from city staff, the answer is yes.
Okay.
All-in, all-in means everything that you see on the list, and let me read it for the record. Uh, twenty-five thousand for taxes, fees, trash, utilities, internet, water, supplies, maintenance, police, fire MT and other.
I think that caps it at twenty-five thousand regardless of what all that stuff costs.
I think I'm tracking that, I think, I think I gathered, I might need some explanation, but I don't want to risk going too far in that.
So, so how much does it cost if someone wanted to rent the ballpark?
Five hundred dollars per game.
Per game, and how many games does he have?
Uh, he's right at, close to thirteen thousand dollars in his schedule right now, I'm guessing and looking. Um, I think we calculated it right at thirteen thousand bucks.
Twenty-eight games, right?
Yeah, five hundred times twenty-eight.
Yeah, thirteen.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's complicated, it's deep. I mean, we, we, we supplement...
Plus practice.
We supplement a lot of activities to go on when we're head city.
You're right.
Subsidized, yes, sir.
Yeah, subsidized, yeah, supplement, subsidize. We, we, we're, we're doing pop-up parks that cost tens of thousands of dollars for one day, one night, or, or a weekend or whatever. And, and here we're talking about, you know, let's charge somebody as much as we can because we've got a ball field out there. I, I don't, I, I, I think we're losing sight of, we're getting too, too much into the weeds of what we're looking at here. We're, 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 we're in the public business to provide service to the public, and do we want a successful ball club out there or not?
Well, I'm getting the ball rolling and I, and I'll, I'll say that I will agree to that twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, term.
As the only payment regardless of police cost.
But it, but is that, but again, that is twenty-five and we're saying thirteen thousand, I mean, we're, we're cutting him in ways to make money, to be there, but we're not reducing his rent. Do we need to look maybe?
Well, look at, we're talking about reducing it from thirty-six to twenty-five.
If the thirty-six was before law enforcement.
The twenty-five would include law enforcement as well.
No, he offered the thirty-six to include.
And I, and I, and I understand that, but if I'm understanding this, this twenty-five would include the two law enforcement officers.
So the twenty-five would include the officers.
Yeah.
That's, yes.
That's what he's trying.
Mayor, approach him, do you want to go lower than that, than twenty-five?
Yeah, well, see, we haven't even gotten to the concession rights yet.
Right, and the office, this is all-in, his suggestion is...
And then we take his office.
His suggestion is twenty-five thousand dollars in every way.
But it would seem to me that Joe, as the finance, can take five hundred dollars times the number of games, plus the cost of the two officers, and come back real quick and tell us whether twenty-five thousand is a good number. Does anybody know if it's any good?
Say that if you're, yes, five hundred dollars a game, but then you gotta look at cost of the dollars today for practices, five hundred dollars a day for additional events. So, yes, thirteen thousand for just the games, but that quickly gives up the count practice days, days out there.
If he, if the Marlins was any other client that comes to get our property, how would you figure it, and figure it the same way?
Well, I mean, yes, you look at all the costs, but, you know, we are, we're never gonna be able to charge enough to get our full return. But as you, as you engage with other organizations, you get closer and closer.
So the smaller the organization, the more likely we'll carry, we'll cover full costs. The smaller the organization, the simpler the organization.
Well, I don't know if I would say that, because maybe the, the less use, the less impact. The bigger the use, the bigger the crowd, the bigger the facilities, your, your utilities are going up on everything. Or buildings, or real properties, or, or personal property, all of them, everything on there, um, you gotta ensure all that. There's so many things to look at.
Which is why you will hear staff say, in kindness, there's no way, and as the mayor said, we're always going to subsidize things, there's not gonna be a fee that satisfies or meets the mean-high tide.
And going back to what Mr. Walker said, we're providing baseball.
And I understand that we have...
So how are we going to come up with a number right now for you and the attorney that both sides are gonna be able to...
Staff is okay with twenty-five thousand dollars, right, twenty-five thousand dollars as presented by the licensee right now, because I've just told you, there's no way someone with his, uh, current projects are gonna be able to meet the mean-high tide. However, there is a budget issue for us, when I say budget issue, we're subsidizing and, and I'm not saying it's going to be a tax increase. I'm just saying that we're going to have to look at what our city costs are and redirect ourself to incur all of these costs, because we will not be receiving revenue.
And that's with two police officers?
As with currently, two police officers under a thousand people, at a level that will lead to minutia out, because I've heard from Chief Dixon behind me, and he is absolutely correct, different levels of service. Staff right now is okay with twenty-five thousand dollars, whether I poll them or not, I'm telling you, there's nothing someone's gonna be able to give us to subsidize all of our, uh, cost.
No, I'm like the mayor, we, we need to decide here if we want baseball and we need, we need to, um, need to be thinking about that.
With staff review and approval of the twenty-five, I'm okay with twenty-five.
Okay.
I want to entertain going lower than the twenty-five.
Two and one, okay.
I don't know what they asked, they said they were going to do twenty-five, that's what the Marlins wanted?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna go with what they asked.
That's three for twenty-five?
Twenty-five with the, with the two officers?
Correct.
The date, did the Marlins, was that requested with the Marlins, with the two officers?
My conversation with him was with four two officers, the increase, uh, I'm confident we'll be able to say, hey, you need to go extra-duty solutions with that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm favorable.
And, and it's, it's written in here, this, this is what, anyhow.
So the Marlins proposed the twenty-five thousand and we're gonna add the two officers?
Well, that's inclusive in it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I've got one addition, I've gotten that, we've checked the box on this one, we can move on with one exception. Uh, there's a consumer price index escalation that is in every license we've ever done.
I was gonna ask you about that, that, and that goes into...
So CPI, we call it CPI, Consumer Price Index, it graduates every year, starting on a year and it escalates. My quick request of you, would you like to include CPI or exclude it?
It's always, I think it's, it's always been in, in the past.
It has, yes, it is, it has, it has been included, um, but again, in the spirit of where the mayor is and what we've said to you before, you want to try to limit the burden upon the licensee as much as possible. Would you like for CPI escalation to be included? It's minor, in our opinion, CPI to a degree?
I'd say hold it at twenty-five for five...
She's not happy with me right now.
Twenty-five, two officers and hold it for five years.
Okay, no, no CPI. That's you? Others?
Lee, you wanted to go down, so I'm gonna guess you're...
Yeah, so he's a yes.
He is not for Consumer Price Index escalation, okay? Yes, CPI, sir, okay?
All right, you got it?
Just repeating for the record, I think we're three-two?
Three-two.
Yeah, thank you, just for Madam Clerk, okay? CPI is included, three to two, cost will be at twenty-five thousand, thank you.
Say this. The, the CPI is included?
Yes, sir.
Three people said this, they want CPI. Now, if you want to repoll, because that's what I'm reading faces more than it is...
Can you, can we repoll?
Yeah, repoll, because I...
Well, yeah, I, I, and my question was, was it already included in the prior contract? And it has been. And, and the reason why I said, well, I didn't, you know, if it's been the prior contract, he knows it's gonna be in this contract.
So is she, Bill and Harvey and me and Lee against?
Yeah.
Re- take it?
All right, that's one more. All right.
Ju, one more, uh, just because staff is telling me I would be adjunct, so that is always capped at, uh, three percent.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just so you know that it won't, will not exceed, if, if Consumer Price Index, the universal global goes above, we won't exceed three percent.
Whatever terrorists do.
Yeah, I'm just used, when you, you, you do a contract with somebody's fixed cost, I wish I could go up, because my lumber prices went up, but it doesn't work like that.
Welcome to government, okay? Next.
City staff provides stadium and field maintenance, we, we do that, right?
Uh, no, so the contention, yes, we do, but the contention is this, uh, game maintenance of field during events will be performed by the Marlins and assisted by city staff, uh, the request of the licensee is that we handle everything and always.
The way I understand it's been in the past, that the city handled the maintenance, but the Marlins assisted.
For the stadium, not during, necessarily during game day, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
They're asking that you staff the game with, um, parks, building staff, public services, parks and rec.
And, and trash.
And what?
Has, has that been happening in the past? The staffing of the, uh...
During the game?
During the game, no.
What would...
Correct.
And I could have sworn at our special meeting, and even prior to that, that that's what he wanted, he wanted his people to take care of the field during the game, and, and maybe I didn't hear that correct.
No, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah, that is not what I gauged from my dialogue with him going forward.
No, I'm talking about when we had that special call.
Understood.
My, my question was, historically, have we done it and the Marlins helped, or has the Marlins done it, we helped?
He just told you that, that they, we are, we have not, we have prepared the stadium and field before the game, but we have not always consistently and evenly staffed every game.
What would you do, what, what would you do when you're there?
Standby, tarpaulin help, tarpaulin is, uh, our version of it rains heavy, and that, what Daniel has done before is that, hey, it's probably gonna rain big and they're gonna need some help.
Well, do we, okay, here's, this is...
So you prepare for that anyhow?
Generally, yes, sir.
This is another question. Do we have our staff there at every game?
No.
So we don't have anybody from the city at the games?
Not from public services to reduce our overtime burden, because remember, they're going, they're working forty hours a week, and if they stay for a game, that brings on the time in one, one-point-five, the time and a half for overtime burden, and we're trying to reduce our staff cost.
All right, what city presence do we have at the games?
Um, on occasion, fire and EMS, uh, police, life safety, um, maybe a Parks and Recreation person, but you will not have building maintenance, the parks and rec, actually, you will not have blue shirts there, forgive me for calling you blue shirts.
Okay, so if, 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 if an incident happens...
Toilet gets clogged...
Who do they contact?
They call the city through Parks and Recreation, like every other field use that we have. The lights don't come on, they call Parks and Recreation. It, it, yeah, and then he has mine too. We don't have a standby-ready maintenance issue.
Okay, no, I'm just thinking about a city presence, somebody... But we don't have anybody at the city at the games.
Not dedicated to all the twenty-eight-plus games that are there and likely practices as well. Now, we're incurring an overtime burden, because they will work forty hours a week, and we will assign them, if council directs, which will be a cost overtime burden. My strongest suggestion is to not do this.
All right, so if we have an incident at the, the, I mean, does Buddy know who to call?
Yes, he does, and he does frequently.
Okay.
His staff does frequently as well.
Okay.
And your, and your city presence, as far as I'm concerned, would be fire, law enforcement.
Let me give you another example, if I may, just quickly, my son plays soccer right now for Seashore Soccer League. There is, on occasion, very rarely, a Parks and Recreation person attended who's out there, because they're managing and managing themselves. And there's two hundred kids out there right now.
All right, so the city staff's recommendation is that the Marlins assume responsibility of the field maintenance?
That we do not have a, uh, public services person attending every practice and every game, on standby.
Okay.
On call.
All right, a poll, everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah.
There are two, Lee. Is that what they want? Is that what the Marlins want?
No, no, the Marlins want the city to do it, yeah.
They want the city to be there during the game.
We take care, they want us to take care of the field during the game.
When they have been doing it themselves.
Correct.
Up to this point.
Correct.
This is, this is part of the concept of all in, for twenty-five thousand dollars, you're gonna do that too.
But, but I would ask, as a courtesy, if we're able to help them.
We do, and I'm telling you that, I'm being strong about this because of the overtime burden to the city.
Yes, yes, sir.
If you tell me to assign somebody, I'll put somebody there, but I get to ask you for more money.
I understand, but as a courtesy, if we can get, have someone there to assist, it would be nice to do.
I'm confident those two people right there, not assistant, what I'm talking about, Daniel and Jessica, will do everything they can to continue their help for any licensee.
And I believe that.
I assure you.
I believe that.
I think we should support the Marlins in this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with supporting the Marlins and having the city staff to provide stadium and field maintenance for normal wear and tear.
Uh, two to one?
Do I have to say that again? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm for, uh, supporting the Marlins in this one, uh, Councilman Ray Bill.
So you want the city staff to take care of?
Yes.
Okay, that's two to one?
George, um, I, I, I mean, I, 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 I really think it's a city field, and I think city staff should do it.
That's two to two? Harvey, you tiebreaker.
How have, have, have we been doing it?
He's been taking care of it, I'm gonna answer that, he's been taking care of it himself, with assistance, with, uh, as Daniel Williams-
But he wants, he, but he wants to change that.
He wants to change that for the city staff to take care of the entire field, the entire time he's there.
Well, what games I have been to, I've seen city staff there taking care of it.
Not saying that they're not there.
I know, I know, Bill, and that's why I think, if at all possible, we need to continue trying to help them with the field. Yeah, I don't see a- I know there's a little crunch there, whether we can or whether we can, and overtime, I understand that, but what games that I've been to, the, the city staff has been there to help them.
I would have to say, it's our field, so I would say we-
And especially to make sure to oversee it, to make sure it's done correctly.
All right, uh, repeating disrespectful to the mayor, again, if he lets me speak, this is three to two in favor of city staff being required to be at games for field maintenance and field preparation during the game as well. We'll draft that as such, it's three to two in favor of city staff being there.
Okay.
Uh, yes, sir, Daniel has a clarity question, Daniel?
I, I think this is the field, I'm, I'm referencing the field.
The licensee has requested that we pick up trash at every, at every-
That was it, we've already discussed that.
No, you have not.
I don't think, no, not trash, I think the field, to keep the field ready to go and, and taking care of our field, I think that's what, not picking up trash.
Oh, you're talking about picking up trash off the ground, I was talking about the dumpster.
We, we provide the green box the way it's meant, and everything else is up to them to get it into the box.
Yeah, this is field, covering it up during rain.
I, I'm saying, I'm, the way I'm reading is game maintenance and field during events, field, is what I'm referring to.
ACM Da- Mr. Williams has also referenced restaurants, I know we're getting into the minutia, but we need to know, because we always get the buzz request at the end of every game, the licensees are generally required to tidy the stadium as much as they can. If you break the, the lavatory, we're gonna come fix it.
No, no, you're saying stadium, he's saying field.
I understand that. Okay, he's asking for a clarity question.
Yeah, that's, I'm clarifying it.
So no change really, as to what we're expecting, except that we're going to put people there during game time.
Get your question answered? Got it? All right, we're good.
Field.
Field, yes. Thank you.
Uh, he wants to remove the public nuisance language, lighting, noise, and fireworks from the license agreement. I don't understand fireworks, but the lighting, I, I think he's-
The fireworks was, I'll be honest, I did that. In fact, something I did, and I'll just tell you why I did it, and that is fireworks has its own thing, you talk to the fire chief, he's got to do this to get fireworks. I wanted to make sure that the document reflected what he's gonna have to do with the fire chief, but it's not really necessary, because he's gotta follow the rules and ordinances, because we made that a requirement, which got into if it's gonna be an entertainment venue in this area, do we need to control anything else? So I just threw it all in there to see what Buddy would say, I don't care if it's in there or not, if you wanna take it out, and that's what he's asking for, I think we have some controls now that we're doing the filtering process, and what we're trying to do is not make this a nuisance in the middle of a residential area. That's the bottom line.
What does public nuisance language include? How do you know you got it?
When, well-
Is that?
It's kind of, it's almost like obscenity, you know when you see it, but such as, if I'm sitting in my living room across the street, and I can read my newspaper through a shade, because the lights are so bright, I can, then that is light bleed, that goes over and it becomes a nuisance to that individual, and that is a member of the public, so it's, it's a broad category when we start talking about public nuisances.
I got one more.
And it generally needs to be more than one person, so it's not just one guy that can't, he can read his paper through, it's the whole neighborhood's got the same problem.
Public nuisance would also include, uh, exceeding the quiet hours as established in city ordinance. Public nuisance would always be light pollution beyond twelve o'clock, i- as, that's, it breaches the spirit of quiet hours, because in your ordinance is a draft sentence that says that, when they get truck whistles that are super, super loud, it's generally to their discretion if it, it exceeds the, and creates a public nuisance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, our ordinance addresses this, doesn't it?
It does.
It does.
And that, that's why I'm saying, we've got other ways of probably dealing with this, instead of that paragraph, I don't legally, I put it in there to try to- We have had instances in the past that if it wasn't in the agreement, that it was allowed. And therefore, I was trying to add some specificity to make sure that there's no issues involved. But we have, since that time, we have held out the thirty-day written notice, we have held out filters, so this is morphing a little away from the need to have that paragraph in there.
Would you, would you like lighting, noise, and fireworks included or excluded from the license agreement?
Excluded.
Yeah.
Excluded.
That's three, got it?
All right, city approval to signs and advertising, I think we addressed that also, with the one, we talked about, city approves everything?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Marlins request to delete any family-friendly reference, and I'm sure that's just by definition, how do you define it?
Yeah, Marlins have requested a legal definition of, uh, what family-friendly is, and striking any reference to family-friendly in the language of the license.
I, I, I don't see where it hurts, I, I really don't.
Keep it, keep it, that's two, that's two for keep it?
I, I don't see where it hurts.
We're branding our park.
Yeah, we wanna keep the family friendly.
That's three for keep it, four for keep it?
Harvey, you want the family friendly?
Yeah, five, five.
Absolutely.
Five for keep it, yeah.
Respectful to the mayor, that is the last one, with my last question, which is not written on the sheet in front of you. What is your direction to me as your city manager, should the licensee decline to sign this new license agreement? I need your general direction, so I don't have to come back to you again, I know where your will is.
Now, you're talking about a time limit, you have X, Y, Z?
You tell me whatever that's going to be, general frame of reference, licensee does, declines to sign this license agreement, what is your direction to me? Come back to you? Engage in another way? I need some direction from you.
Can I ask, in, Mr. Mayor, well, whoever's got a business might be able to answer this, um, what is the general rule of thumb when it comes to negotiating a contract, that deadline, Mr. Taylor? Or is there one?
The bottom line in contract law is, if the parties can come to an agreement as to what their agreement is, and put it in writing, everything is fine. If they can't, there is no agreement. Comes into the specificity of offer and acceptance, and who's making the offer, who's making the acceptance? It is our property, so we are offering a license for them to use our property, and they either accept it or they don't. If they don't accept it, then there is no agreement, and the license that we're currently under expires in one year, and there will be no new license.
He's been generally responsive, he doesn't take thirty days to respond, we usually hear pretty quick.
So two weeks is ample time. When, when does his current license expire?
Next year, that is after the next baseball season.
He just said twenty twenty-six.
So, so we, you know.
Yeah, the, the, the pressure to get it done is the league wants a two-year or more period of time for him to hold on to his franchise.
Yeah, the Marlin organization's the ones under the time crunch.
That's correct.
They have to have a lease in place a year before.
My question to you is not his response time, it's what, what do you direct me to do if any licensee, he declines to sign a license, where do you, where?
Chris is asking us bluntly, is if Buddy says, I'm not gonna sign, I want to continue to negotiate, do we want to accept that, or say, no, let's put it out as an RFP? Let's find out with this contract or with these requirements, if we can get out of the takers. If we can't get out of the takers, it may be a sign, we're not being realistic, and have to change that. But it's up or down, are you going to play ball with this or not?
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
That's a good question, and that's, it can be a difficult one.
The question, the answer, my, my answer is, bring baseball to Morehead.
Yes, sir, and I, you, you're in receipt of interest, you're an email of interest, so, that's my, that's my request. You're sparing us from RFP rules and legal stuff, uh, you're already in receipt to entities that have, uh, communicated to you their interest to come to Morehead City. If this licensee, bringing baseball, I hear you loud and clear, we're bringing baseball in all the ways, that's my, your directive to me was bring me all the baseball in great ways. Field my stadium, tracking a hundred percent, junior college, community college, high school, visitors, and a wonderful summer wood bat league, which we already have right now. Should this summer wood bat league, the Marlins, that we already have right now, that we love dearly, decline this, what is your direction specifically for the Marlins to me?
Find baseball, bring it here.
Okay, that's one. That's two?
Yep.
All right, I think the question is, if, if he doesn't sign it, uh-
Well, he's, he's here till-
He'll, he'll look outside the box.
He's here until the end of next season, is that correct?
Twenty twenty-six, okay.
Yeah, but the thing to Chris is, uh, you're telling, we'd be telling Chris not to bring it back to the council if he doesn't sign it.
What do you wanna do if he says no?
That's, bring it back, or that's the end of it.
You know, how many times, is this the fifth or sixth time?
This is license draft number four, this will be number five.
I think five is the magic number.
Just, I love the Marlins organization, they've been a very, very big part of Morehead City, and this really puts us in a unique situation, because we're dealing with a current licensee, and we're trying to compare a current licensee with someone that's coming in here from new.
Yes, sir.
And I just don't want to, to be putting the hammer down so hard that we lose the Marlin organization, that's the last thing I want to happen. And I tried, and I'm gonna go on record, because I know we're being videoed, and I'm, I'm gonna go on record to say that I tried my best to have Mr. Bingle in these discussions with us, so we could hear his response back to us, and we try to negotiate this and move forward. Now, we're taking an organization that we currently have a license agreement with, and we're putting these proposals out here, and we're not having the opportunity to listen to him. And it just puts us in a very, very unique situation. I was hoping that we could do it in a different way than we've done tonight, because Mr. Bingle was here, and he's not here anymore. I wish there was an opportunity, we'd have been able to have a little bit of dialogue with him, hoping that this transitional period would have been a little bit easier for us and for him. And I just hope that we don't lose that organization in this process. Um, again, I know we have other organizations that want to use the ballpark, I welcome them, I want them to come. But in the meantime of bringing other new in, I don't want to push someone out that's been very vital to this community, and has brought baseball, family-friendly baseball to this community, and has got deep roots and ties in this community. I don't want to lose that, and I just never do I want to shut the door on somebody and say, you know, Mr. Turner, either he signs this or not, there's got to be, again, the city council has got the final say, and I say, take the, and I might be by myself, but take what we have, we have given you tonight, and present it to Mr. Bingle, let the attorney type it up, present it to Mr. Bingle, and see where he lands. But again, I'm not in the position tonight to say, sign it or else. I would love to have the opportunity to have a little bit of dialogue with Mr. Bingle and the Marlins organization.
Yeah, my suggestion would be not to make that decision tonight, but see what happens, then bring it back for that decision.
Okay, I got two to one?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Baloo, I'm not ready to, uh, close the door on the Marlins. And I, I actually liked the format we did last time, we just didn't have every council member here for the last meeting, but when we had Mr. Bingle at the podium, we went down the list, we told Mr. Bingle, hey, these are the things that we feel like is the vision for this contract. He'd agree to disagree, and I felt like we came to, you know, a, a good agreement, and, uh, he was satisfied.
But he turned down that agreement that he generated from that meeting.
I just feel like, um, what we did tonight may not be the, the best way to do it without hearing Mr. Bingle's input. Um, I'm not so ready to shut the door on, on the Marlins and-
Well, you got to understand too, he walked out. He was here, he walked out.
I know, but again, I was hoping, Councilman Ray Bill, that we would have had an opportunity to have a little dialogue with him.
And, and there may have been, Mr. Baloo, that, that would be entirely up to the mayor, that once we got through with this, he could have easily said, Mr. Bingle, would you like to come up to the podium and address anything?
Yes, sir.
I might be wrong, Mr. May, I don't know, I, if, if I'm following the correct rules or not.
And you're right, that's, that's true. Yes, sir.
But he could have.
Anyway, the question is, is, is it a done deal, or do you want the manager to bring it back?
Well, uh, 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 let me, let me interject this, Jerry, real fast. There's nobody up here more committed to wanting the Marlins to play. But I also represent the city, okay? We have a job to do, okay? We're there, we've got a stadium that we're paying for, okay, we've got to provide entertainment for that stadium. So I'm, I hope Mr. Bingle hears what we have to offer, because I'd like for him to be here, but at the same time, we've gotta look at the other side. We have got to provide baseball for this city, that's the bottom line. You know, so I hope that he will work with us, but if he doesn't, we still have a task. We have to bring baseball here, we've got a stadium, we've gotta fill it. So no, I hope that he agrees, and I'd like to work with him, but at the same time, generally, we've gotta bring baseball here. We have invested almost four and a half million dollars in a baseball park. When we talk about the next grant that we're gonna add the improvements. During that time, we only had one person or one group that wanted to play ball at our facility. Now, we have several. I think as a council, in this past year, we formed the vision, un, sort of, in conversation unofficially, that we want to have multi-teams playing and increase the amount of baseball in our community. And in order to do that, we have to change the way we're doing business. We can't give the Bingles what they want, exclusive rights to everything at the ballpark. We have to share, and we're, we've asked five times for Mr. Bingle, after presentation, to understand the vision and to share with us, at this point, he hasn't done it. How many times do you have to ask that question? And I think five times is a lot, and is sufficient. So if Mr. Bingle was to refuse whatever you, you generate, then it's time to look outside.
then it's time to look outside, test it in the marketplace, send out an RFP. And if we don't get people interested in it, then we've missed the boat in the contract. And that sends us back to our desk to rewrite the contract with more knowledge. But the only thing we're doing right now is going around in a circle. I'd hate to think how many staff hours we spent with this project. It's time to get a decision, and if we're not doing the right thing, send it to the marketplace, get a feel for what might work, and revisit with everybody again. That's, to me, it's, it's just time. We all want baseball in Morehead City. Marlins are great people, these other leagues are great, we know we have a great relationship with the community college and American League ball, why not continue?
I guess the, the question was asked though, um, Phil, was, you know, what happens next? And I, and, and my hope is that, you know, um, Mr. Bingle will, uh, uh, Mr. Turner will present what we have, um, talked about here tonight, and bring it back to us, and the council will have to make a, a final decision, you know?
I would say make the final decision tonight.
Tonight.
If, if we present it, what we presented tonight is put in the document, and is rejected by Mr. Bingle, then let's test it out in the marketplace and find out what we gotta get changed and get the thing done.
And I'm, and you know something, I love Buddy to death, I really do, I've always gotten along fine with him, but, you know, we just can't keep on going and going and going and going. We know for a fact that Mr. Turner, uh, related to it, that there's a possibility somebody else is interested in. I'm sure he knows that by now.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that might put it a little bit more.
And look, we conceded to a lot of the things that he requested.
I agree.
Uh, so I feel like he'll come around and do it, personally.
He will make a business decision as a business.
Exactly.
If he can get a proper return, I'm not gonna, I hate to put words in his mouth, but if I was sitting in his chair, if I can't make money doing this, I don't want to do it.
Well, I guess you got.
We have put so many restrictions on him that he doesn't feel like he can make how the cash he needs to have the program here. He will look for another venue in the same way we would look for a different partner here. And, you know, that is his determination now, is this, what he is going to have is absolutely, this is what we're going to do, give you a license. Please evaluate this and determine whether or not you, as a businessman, can work within those confines. Then let him decide. I, it's entirely up to you guys, it's what you do next. You can tell the manager, go look for alternatives, okay? And then, as you have indicated, Mr. Taylor, if those alternatives don't really provide us with anything that we can seize hold of in some document like this one, then maybe reevaluate, maybe we are making it impossible for anybody to have a baseball team here under these kind of rules, which is what I think was Mr. Taylor saying. But do we keep going back and forth, is the question? If he says no, I'm not gonna sign that, I don't like what it says, are you gonna ask the manager to look at alternatives at that point?
Well, that was my suggestion, just to bring it back for the council to make that decision.
And that's entirely up to you two, how do you want to get to the next step, which is, we keep going, or do you want him to start looking for alternatives?
I'm clear now, having heard him. I'll repeat what that clarity is for everybody who's here, and you correct me if I'm wrong. There's three of you that have suggested, and I'll just say that it's Mr. A Bell, Mr. Walker, Mr. Taylor, that baseball, baseball, baseball is our priority. In addition to that, there are two of you who wish to continue with our, our good dialogue, uh, being, uh, Mr. Styles and Mr. Blue, and I will generally include the mayor, even though he's not, his opinion matters to me and the city, um, with that. I will be blunt and transparent as I always am, you have received an email from a, a different summer wood bat league that has interest in the city, so there is interest there. We love our Marlins, but in addition to that, the Marlins are a franchise of the Coastal Plains League, which is owned by Capital Broadcasting Group, managed by the Durham Bulls organization, they were, they were here to speak to you, and I've spoken to their chief executive officer about their intent. Their feedback to you during that special, if some of you were here, we're not, uh, their feedback to you is that they want to continue to have Coastal Plains League engaged in your city, and they will work with us, you, the city, to find and make a way forward. They are the third kind of silent partner in this, this conversation that helps us with good dialogue with the Marlins organization. So just so you understand, it is not one hundred percent a Marlins decision whether they should vacate this city. We get to have a dialogue with the parent, and the parent of that organization is the Coastal Plains League. Repeating again, you've received an email from another league that has interest, a summer wood bat league, for everyone sitting here listening. I will not engage with any of those entities. Until such time as I get a license back or a license declination, I'll bring that back to you, okay? Is that a fair statement for me, very last sentence?
Yes.
I will not kick off a request for proposals process until I seek council's will and approval to do so. Am I deviating from your will? Okay, hearing none.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
Don't come back just to tell us that he said no, when you come back, you better have a plan off.
Solutions, I'm tracking, I'm receiving, I know you. I don't want that foot near my, near my face, okay, I got it.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda, citizens' comments, um, just a reminder, it's a three-minute time limit. Now's the time for anybody in the audience to like to come up and, and, uh, make any comments to the council, okay? Chris, you raised your hand.
Mr. Mayor, Mister, and, uh, Councilman, I'm Chris Montelion. I live in downtown Morehead City. I am a candidate for Morehead City Council. I'm here as the president of the Morehead City Historical Society and as a resident. And the good news, and not so good news, uh, that I bring you, I, uh, I don't know why, but it just gives me a thrill to see the people's representatives at work and caring, and going through the sausage-making, which isn't pretty sometimes, of coming to an agreement for the public good. I, I, that, I think it's wonderful what y'all are doing, how you're doing it. But there's room for improvement, but that's not where I'm going tonight. I have asked the city to help clean up the blight that everybody knows is in downtown, and I've asked the city for two hundred and fifty dollars. The Department of Transportation has given our organization vests and, um, uh, uh, bags and that sort of thing, but they didn't give us money for pickers. My people tell me that they would love to have pickers. So I've asked for two hundred and fifty dollars, and I hope that when the time comes, that, uh, through the grants department and, uh, through the city manager, uh, that that will be granted. So what am I talking about? Light. What I'm gonna show you is a matter of record with the town, but somebody hasn't seen it yet. So, just gonna take a very brief moment. Okay. There's, uh, an automobile that the town has known about for almost a year, it's been on, uh, within sight of a rental street, not clearly, but it's there. It's a hundred feet from Randall Street. Across the street from Jackson, some song. There's been no license on that vehicle for over a year. It attracts rodents, it attracts vermin, it's a safety hazard for humans, and it's a safety hazard.
Thank you, Chris, that's your three minutes.
And I ask permission to show these signs without further comment, I will show these pictures without further comment from me.
Uh, I announced the three-minute time limit before you.
Thank you. I will say that these pictures, these photographs of blight all over our downtown are already a matter above a record. They're in city's domain, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, three-minute time limit, please.
Good evening, my name is Marissa Moore, I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Morehead City Incorporated. I'm here tonight to regretfully inform you that I will be stepping back due to a military move, my husband got orders. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys, take this opportunity, I really enjoyed this partnership with the city and our organization. I hope it continues, I've had great dialogue with some of you and with city staff, it's really been a wonderful time working on developing this community and making it better for everyone involved. I hope to be able to come back at some point, I'll keep it short and sweet, but I just wanted to thank you all and take this opportunity to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to the council? Jan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak, so. I've got, um, some questions about a couple items that were on the consent agenda tonight, and hope that you can give me some explanation or understanding of, of what's going on. And the first one has to do with the amendment, um, number fourteen, which is item three D. That's where you're moving three hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the water and sewer fund towards the WS King project. So my guess, my question is, what, what, um, what is that money going to be used for in this next step toward getting a gymnasium for the city? Um, is this part of the eight million dollars which you approved in the city budget, or is this over and above the eight million dollars that you had approved? If it's over, or if it's not over, but what, what is the possibility that this project will come in? Maybe more than the eight million dollars, and how much more are y'all willing to accept over the eight million? And, um, with the cost of this project, um, will this affect the financial status of the city? Will this affect the ability for the city to get a loan and a good rate at a loan? And will this affect a relationship with the local government commission in a bad way? Um, and then also, how do you intend to pay this money back to the Water and Conservation Fund? The second issue was, um, similar in the Big Rock Stadium, um, number three E, number fifteen amendment. And again, what is the four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars going to be used for in this next step of the renovations? If you're taking this money away from the four line items or the sources, does this mean that we're not gonna get the fire museum built? Um, and also, will this impact other projects which are, are in the planning stage? Then again, how will this money be, be paid back to, to those accounts? So I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, and, um, yeah, Chris made a note of that, you'll get back with her.
We can answer every single one, got it.
Anybody else in the audience have any requests, comments to the council? Okay, council comments, Harvey, you want to kick it off?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you all for coming, it's been an interesting conversation tonight. And, and, and I would have to agree with you, Mr. Montelion, it was good to see us work tonight, that was a good conversation, way to get things done. Thank you all for coming, enjoy this cool weather, and stay safe.
It's good to see everyone tonight, and again, um, Councilman Walker, this cool weather, um, I love the hot weather, love going out in the boat, love the summertime. I work outside, but when that cool weather comes along, it's a good refresher. And also, it always reminds me of the North Carolina Seafood Festival when the cold weather comes upon us, and that is going to be the third, fourth, and fifth of October, so please come down, um, on the Morehead City waterfront, and, um, let's have a good festival this year. Good to see everyone, God bless you, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and I want to give another congratulations to Mr. Scott Camden for his retirement from our Morehead City Fire and EMS department. I want to give, uh, kudos to, uh, our Parks and Recreation Director Jessica Mayo, and also our Sports Director, uh, Andre Perez, for putting on a, a, another successful campaign of flag football. Uh, I coach a, a team in the ten to twelve-year-old division, the Madden Division. We had our first game, uh, last Thursday, and it was a great turnout for both games, one game was at five thirty, the other game was at six thirty. Mayor Pro Tim came out to watch his grandson play, and, um, it's just more proof that our, our Parks and Recreation, um, programs are expanding, and all the parents, uh, were, were grateful, um, for us putting it on the way we did. And I think we're gonna have another, uh, for the duration of the league, of the season, we're gonna have, uh, another great, um, year this year. So I just want to thank them for that. Also, uh, Mr. Nick Eaton, who, uh, attended our Finance Administration Meeting last Tuesday, and also our Public Services Committee Meeting on Wednesday. He is the, the Chairman of the Seafood Festival Board, he's already doing a fantastic job. He's willing to answer any questions we may have regarding the festival. And, um, just like Mayor Pro Tim said, the festival's from October the third through the fifth this year. And, uh, Mr. Eaton and his staff have, uh, worked hard to make it successful this year. I want to encourage all citizens, uh, to attend. Speaking of citizens, um, there is one citizen who is, uh, wheelchair-bound, his name is Eric Gilliam. Stays in, uh, King Terrace Apartments, he came here and spoke during citizens' comment, uh, maybe about a year ago. And, uh, he was talking about crosswalks, uh, from Carri Health Care to Carri Community College, he's attending college at Carri Community College. And he wants to see if we can continue the discussion, um, with DOT about, um, implementing crosswalks. He also mentioned too, that it's hard for him to get to his doctor's office on Randall Street, um, near Bojangles, we do have sidewalks there, but he's saying that, um, from where he travels, from King Terrace, uh, Chris, um, the farthest he can make it is, uh, the friendly market, because, uh, we don't have sidewalks, I guess he's talking about the intersection of bridges and friendly. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to, uh, to state that, because I talked to him on the phone earlier today and last week, and I told him I would bring it up during council member comments. But that's all I have for tonight.
Well, tonight has been a busy night, and we talked about an important topic, and that is providing recreational opportunity for our youth and our older people. You know, I may have gray hair, and I may be not quite as old as Dirk, but I'm getting there. But to go to a baseball game and to have a choice of baseball teams is a great advantage for a community to provide. Making sausage, as Chris has mentioned, is, is an ugly business, and we were doing that today. And we appreciate your patience while that's taking place. But this council has a goal of having a fully functional baseball park with a choice of teams for your entertainment, and a hope for everyone's benefit. That's my comment.
All right, um, Mr. Taylor, I think your hair is mostly white.
Mine's gray.
But anyhow, I get, I, I would like to thank everybody for coming out as well, and again, I, um, kudos, uh, to, uh, Scott Camden for his, uh, service to not only this community, but to this state and the fire service. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a, a, a good friend of mine and a good friend of a number of us up here, the, the, on the council and the mayor. Uh, Tommy Knox passed away last week, uh, he been battling, has been battling cancer for the, about a year now, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah.
But, uh, he had succumbed to his, uh, his disease, and, uh, so I just ask that your thoughts and prayers be with his wife, Cindy, and their. so I just ask that your thoughts and prayers be with his wife, Cindy, and their daughter, Lisa. Um, and again, I, I just will say thank y'all to the staff for everything that, yeah, you too, Daniel, uh, that you do, or Farmer Daniel, um, that you.